... to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, under our nation, under God, in this soul, in this soul.
Your call, please.
Mayor Proton Reagan.
President.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
President.
Councilmember Green.
President.
Councilmember Ritz. Mayor Estes.
President. Next dialogue on the agenda is called Public. NRS thirty-eight, that's what we're bringing on the line, but does not make decisions. Make it open, call the public, very public meeting, subject to speech will find place, narrow the restrictions into the home individuals to address the public body on any issue within jurisdiction of the public body. The time will be limited to three minutes per speaker, those wishing to address the public body, so they must hear their remarks to issues within the jurisdiction of the public body. However, this room shall not be used for making personal attacks or discuss a personal issue directed to any individual members of the city council or any other state employee. Any one of us speak, you call the public? Okay. Nobody called the public, so we'll move on to the next item, the fire chief report, this monthly report from our firm from April first to April thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mayor and council staff. Ladies and gentlemen, so for the month of April, we had forty-six total calls. We have free service calls, thirty-three medical, we had four rescues, and six fires. And one of the things I wanted to outline was the accident on CSR, just wanted to just proclaim how proud my staff are, I am, and they got through soon as the patients within moments. We had six of my firefighters on the accident, and also myself, being the incident commander, and working with the two different area agencies, got LZ set up down at the bottom of the hill, and had air map and lifeline coming in, and good contact with the pilots, because they were within close proximity of each other, and got the patients assessed and to the hospital as quickly as possible. So everybody has a great team effort, and I just wanted to commend my staff. I wanted to also talk about the six fires, and it's something that is concerning in as far as make sure the fires are all open, fires are the bird fires, small fire pits or burn piles. The issue is that we are getting more and more of these calls for open burn class, and especially when we have the flag days and it ruins the day, at the end, it only takes one to be a disaster. So it's something that we are wanting to to address as quickly as possible, and getting TMOs help and educating the public, specifically the homeowners or whoever the property owner is as to why. And unfortunately, there were two different ranch owners, or actually property owners that were habitual offenders and would burn continuously. So that's something that we're going to be addressing with command and walkings as soon as we are able to do reports hit these two individuals that we've been having issues with and get advice and how to deal with them, whether it be just getting TMO to assist us, asking for TMO to align on the scene with us, but we want to get an answer on that. And also speaking of fires, we were ready to go on the stronghold fire we weren't utilized, like the Bisbee fire, we were, we sent two firefighters, we actually were proactive, called in, two firefighters that were off duty, because I didn't want to lose a string of staff that we have, make sure that the city foremost is protected. So got the two firefighters in, and we were used by a Bisbee fire in the state, and it's a type of fire that we are actually paid for, individuals are paid for, and equipment is paid for, and one of the next things about the state is they're tightening up on that, we have already gotten a check from the state, where four years prior, it could take up to six months in one case, one year, it was actually a year before we saw anything. But state has identified the admin issues, and this is our first fire this season, but we're happy that we got state within. So those are the issues that are at hand, are there any questions from the public?
I'd like to ask the chief if you would put out here, I've noticed that no open plans in the city of Tombstone, anywhere within the city of Tombstone, and I would say it is because of the dryness, it's serious, this is the worst I've ever seen, so I'll get over here and I'll get over to the commander and we'll get that done.
Okay, excellent. Just really quick, one of the other things that I wanted to just go real quick is that the, we're going to be sending myself and our firefighters out to residents, we're going to be, since we get more of these door hangers, it's the, we're going to be educating the public on the ready, set, go system, where they have their go bags, and things like identify if they're ready for any kind of a event, such as a fire, be alert, which is a set part where they know that there's a fire going, and they're ready, having things by the door, and then go. And so where they have already access group plan, family plan printed in place, and one of the things I'm really looking forward to is us all being out in the residential areas and talking to the homeowners and getting these door hangers out and people to.
Quick question, yeah, a quick question, chief. I take these property owners that you were saying, if I were to give them a nudge, if you will, not to do it, they were just recalcitrant, they said, I'll do what I please.
Pretty much, sir.
Because we all know how dry it is, that's why I was wondering why somebody would just take a chance on nudge.
Right, and we are now issuing permits, for sure, and especially, you know, during this season. And so there are no excuses, but we want to make sure that we, you know, educate them and that make them knowledgeable, and, you know, they see the news, I'm sure that they see all the fires around, you know.
That's why I bring it up, I mean, we can all see it, because it sort of sounds like it just being kind of defined.
Well, so what we, when I get, when I talk to the home, the setting homeowners, actually the two I've been referring to is, is that, well, I just had this little bit to learn, you know, it's like, it's just a small pile, and, you know, I'm trying to explain to them that, again, all it takes is a spark, and it's just amazing how, a great example is on Davis Road, a month or so ago, we had a small brush fire that was right on Davis Road, and the poor guy that had tired for a little while on his trailer, the trailer scraped, you know, I mean, the whole thing went out, and the trailer's wheel scraped, sparked, and he saw, he said, within seconds, I saw the fire, called nine-one-one, got my rig out of the way, but he said, I was absolutely astounded how quickly, and there wasn't any wind that day, but he was still astounding how quickly that spread.
Drive here, perfect.
Yes, you have a question by a, regarding that post that was made of a resident who called in twice, has that resident been identified, maybe, not that I want to know who it is, but have we found who that was and assisted that person?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then for future, is there a way that, I mean, I don't know if there's lots, how you maybe get a hold of it, but is there some sort of assessing way that people would just call nine-one-one instead of, I didn't even know you had a second-digit number to call a fire department, but what is in play for something like that, so it doesn't happen again?
For folks to call nine-one-one, and we can be sent off, sent out on smoke investigations or open fire.
No, I mean, the gentleman who made the phone call, it was on.
I think, I think we're going to answer your question later on this evening with the CCOM agreement, so I think there's no need to.
I was just going to say, if you have somebody to judge.
Judge, okay.
Hi, good evening. My question is, how often do we test the fire hydrants?
Annually. I'd like to get it down to six months, but we do them annually.
Can I get with you later and see when the last time my fire hydrant was checked?
Sure.
I say mine, because it's just like, right there, so. It was something that I was thinking about. And then, do we wait for an emergency to happen, to get a place where if something bad happened, we would have a place for all of our residents to go, or do you already have something in mind?
If there's a, if there's a state of emergency, the power is out, so we've been using the senior center.
Uh-huh.
But if there is a state of emergency, the sheriff's office and the marshal's office would coordinate where everybody should get her, and we would probably, I would say, end up at the school unless they've been wrecked, passed into the problem.
Okay.
But that's what usually happens, is the school is used for something like that.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. And just real quick, the senior center was used twice last year for cooling center, with the power window on, it was, we had to, county and CCOM help us get their word out, and we actually had a few people that showed up.
Yeah, I remember that, thank you.
All right, anything else, chief?
No, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next dialogue on the agenda is approved of the minutes discussion on action, minutes and way of accounts meeting on Tuesday, on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I ask for motion to approve. Approved. Second, most ladies, second, is there a discussion on the minutes? Uh, no discussion on the minutes. Full discussion on there, uh, on the carrier. I have made discussion interaction on approval of the council there, with a report in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred sixty-nine hundred sixty-eight cents, this is the short period between April first, twenty twenty-five, and April thirty of twenty twenty-five, I ask for motion to approve. Approved. Second. Most ladies, second, discussion. I have no discussion, roll call, both, both things.
Mayor Proton Reagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritz.
I have to abstain. Madam.
Yes. I have made discussion interaction on approval of resolution number zero-one, that two-zero-two-five, the resolution estimating chief physical officer for official submitting, officially submitting the physical year of twenty twenty-six, expenditure limitation report to the year on, on the general context, I ask for motion to approve.
Okay.
Second. Most ladies, second, we have discussion on this. I have no discussion, full discussion, roll call.
Mayor Proton Reagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritz.
Yes.
Mayor Estes.
Yes, on the carrier. I have seek discussion interaction on approval of resolution zero-three, that two-zero-two-five, a resolution authorizing approval and sign the legal documents regarding the agreement of E-ray services between the city of Tombstone Library and Yarra County. I ask for motion to approve. Approved. Second, most ladies, second, is there any discussion on?
Yes, if this is approved, the name has to change, Tim Carter, longer county school superintendent.
Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said.
Tim Carter is the name for the county school superintendent on the E-ray services document, the other document is a different superintendent, Tim Carter no longer is superintendent, we all have him, so that's all.
I will let the E-ray services know, just so you American council aware, the three primary account are Mayor Estes, Proton, Reagan, and myself, and this is basically who we have as a check standard, is anybody that can sign, that's what we're secure, but I would have to let that change.
Okay, any further, any further discussion? Roll call, both, chief.
Mayor Proton Reagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritz.
Yes.
Mayor Estes.
Yes, on the carrier. And B, approval of agreements of E-ray service in between the Tombstone Library and the city of Tombstone, Yarra County, Yarra County School Superintendent, purpose provides discounts up to ninety percent on assistance to most schools and libraries in the United States, and just paying portable telecommunications and internet access, there's no fees, receive credit on valid telecommunication bill, and the term is July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty of twenty twenty-eight, I ask for motion to approve.
So, second.
Most ladies, second, we have discussion on this.
I guess some of these questions, it says no fee, but in the contract, it says four hundred dollars.
It's a credit, it's four hundred dollars that we can get, I don't know, let me see that, because we usually don't pay a fee. What generally happens is Bell Telecom, who is our internet provider, they provide services to our library, some of those hundred fifty-five dollars a month, they believe it's ninety percent off, they give about thirteen dollars for their internet service, but we usually generate credit on our account, so I still have four hundred dollars basically there. I'll have to question that.
It's on, it's on page four, thirteen, number six, payment and consideration, and it's got four hundred dollars each, because like, I was concerned about that, because what you see goes through cots, and cots goes up there for.
A quick clarification, I guess unfortunately, it's subject to negotiation, could say that, no, I mean, I don't think it's our work ethic, I was just curious whether we have actual leverage.
I mean, this, and when I read it on, when I read on the, um, page three, it says all they're doing is preparing the bid and the necessary preparing contracts for E-ray and publish for the call for the bids, and then they also say, they say no promises and guarantees, I understand they've got promises and guarantees, but most services are completed and erased, ones are completed, but completed by the entity providing the service.
No, I'm certain for the video, I'm asking the question.
We've been on E-ray services, I would say, the last ten years or so, and we've always just gotten credit, so, and they're the ones that go out for the RFP, they're the ones that do everything, who can be back off of it, off of the hair of my account? I mean, I can call and ask a question, it's.
Who's the RFP voting then?
It's your account.
No, no, we're, we're getting the Yarra County.
It goes to all internet providers.
There's a lot of them.
It goes to the internet providers, so TMO used to be our provider, but now we've got fiber, E-ray can't pay for the fiber to the RFP, so now the only fiber that we have is our telecom account.
Any further discussions? Call of discussion, roll call.
Mayor Proton Reagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritz. Yes, I'll say yes. Mayor Estes.
Yes, on the carrier. Next dialogue, B, discussion interaction on approval of resolution zero-three, that's two-zero-two-five, a resolution clearing, it's called, to block numbers two-six-two, two-six-three, and two-six-four, a utility and utility that lands thereon with the Tombstone territory, this is unit number one, to be a necessary roadway and a baggage in the same purpose, called, the portion of exterior boundaries of block numbers two-six-two, two-six-three, two-six-four, parcel of built property owned by Old West Properties Investment, was determined by the American council, that's not necessary for public use, and the exterior council meeting on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, I ask for motion to approve the reservation.
First, please.
A second.
Most ladies, second, American discussions. I have no discussion, roll call, both, please.
Mayor Proton Reagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Ritz.
Yes.
Mayor Estes.
Yes, on the carrier. Next, I have a discussion interaction on approval of regional nine-one-one communication between the city of Tombstone and CCOM, purpose to provide dispatch service for law enforcement, fires, and emergency medical services, a fee of sixty-two thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars fifty cents a year, determined July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty of twenty twenty-six, and now we have a presentation from ten ago, after we opened up for discussion, so I'll ask for motion to approve.
Approved.
Second.
Most ladies, second, any discussion? Danny Doak. Danny.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, staff, and the public, thank you for this opportunity to share with you a little bit about CCOM, and for the consideration of joining partnership with CCOM, South Houston, Arizona, a communications center on a full-time basis, currently you're on a part-time basis. What that means is, TMO currently dispatches Monday through Friday from eight AM to four PM for law enforcement, any fire or medical calls come directly to CCOM during that time period. After four PM, Monday through Friday, and then through the weekend, holidays, sick days, vacation days, whatever, CCOM covers for dispatch services for the Tombstone area. CCOM was established in two thousand eighteen, and this was a partnership with Cochise County Sheriff's Office and the Sierra Vista Police Department, and when we came together in one building at that time, it was just those two agencies that we were dispatching for. We have currently grown to serve nine law enforcement agencies, and seventeen of the twenty-two fire agencies, and one EMS agency across the six thousand square miles of Cochise County. Benson is their own dispatch area, and they dispatch for Benson Fire, Benson Police, Muscat, St. David, and Powery, and Douglas dispatches for their own area for Douglas Fire and Douglas Law Enforcement. Douglas is currently CCOM's backup center, if anything happens, and maybe you flip a switch and go somewhere else to work, Douglas is my backup. We are the only center in Cochise County that uses pre-arrival instructions, which is a benefit to the community, joining us on a full-time basis. The pre-arrival instructions are basically the way we dispatch, when dispatchers answer the phone, they ask slated questions, depending on the nature of your emergency, and we stay on the phone depending on the nature of the emergency, providing pre-arrival instructions. So essentially, the response time starts when we start giving the pre-arrival instruction, not when the fire department or law enforcement has told you, we start here. We are certified in all three protocols, which is emergency medical dispatch, emergency fire dispatch, and emergency police dispatch, and with these protocols, it reduces the response time by our ability to provide information on how to start CPR, or we had an incident in the San Simone area last year, where a father was teaching his son how to backup a UTV onto a trailer, and dad's leg got stuck between the trailer and the UTV, and he was, he was hurting leg hemorrhaging, he had an arterial bleed, and we had to act very quickly to tell the father how to instruct his son to apply a tourniquet. When fire two cleared that scene, he called us immediately and said, you saved his life, he wouldn't let out in front of his son if it wasn't for the pre-arrival instructions. And then he delivered it to the babies too, so I gotta give you a bit of the bad. With continued projected growth, we just submitted a draft subscriber agreement to Porta Tuda, they're looking to also join us on a part-time basis. This is pretty unique for the nation, I think only one other area in the nation does this, the much worse list. We would be dispatching from ten PM to six AM, Monday through Friday, weekends and holidays, based on, or depending upon whatever agreement is finally approved by the federal government. And they are currently moving to the fire station, Lurie, which all of our fire departments have, so that when we have them join us on a part-time basis, there's no lapse in the service that's provided. They're providing the same service on court when they're dispatching as we would be providing them when we would be dispatching. Additional benefits to join CCOM on a full-time basis is, at the end of the summer, Motorola, we're, we're in the process of upgrading our radio towers, Motorola upgrade will be complete hopefully by September, this should dramatically improve the radio coverage. It's not just going to be based off the cell tower, or shock of the radio towers, it's going to be based on the cell towers, and when the sheriff talks about our new radio program that's covering Cochise County, he likes to brag about the fact that if he's in Phoenix or Flagstaff, he can talk to me at CCOM from that area on these new radios, so that's pretty exciting. And with that possibility, we've got Brown County looking at joining us as a whole, Brown County Sheriff's Office, Sapper Police and Fire, Thajra Police and Fire, P One Police and Fire are looking at joining us because of the new radio system. With the new radio system, I've been advised that we would be the backup to GPS, so there wouldn't be any user fee agreements, but that still works. Other benefits would be, of course, the use of priority dispatch protocols, and then, of course, complete transparency and partnership on my car. My position as the executive director at CCOM is want a partnership across the community. I was selected for this position because of my partnerships, as I was working as the emergency management deputy director, and I built those partnerships, so when Sheriff Daniels asked me if I'd be interested, I said, sure, why not? I like a good challenge, and here we are today. So I feel my success is because of the partnerships that I've developed over the last five years. And just to give you a couple of other pieces of information, I put together some numbers of total calls that were received in the year of twenty twenty-two. We received one hundred eighty-seven thousand calls into the communication center, one hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred forty-eight of those were admin calls, and fifty-one thousand two hundred eighty-three were non-point calls. When we look at twenty twenty-three, the year ending admin calls were one hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixteen, and year ending non-point calls were fifty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-nine, for a total of one hundred eighty-six thousand fifteen calls, and as of the year of twenty, ending of twenty twenty-four, admin calls were at one hundred forty-five thousand two hundred forty-four, and year ending non-point calls were at fifty thousand four hundred seventy-nine, for a total of one hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred twenty-three calls into my dispatch center. So we've, we've been growing probably by about ten thousand calls per year, which is a lot. My accomplishments over the last two years, when I started this position in February of twenty twenty-three, I had seven full-time dispatches, and I'm allotted twenty. As of yesterday, I have to say, I just extended an offer letter for my eighteenth person. New training opportunities and mental health, as I'm kind of lacking to share, struggle well, all of my staff is going through those trainings, and we are getting everybody certified in crisis negotiations. Nine times out of ten, any of those calls that might be a hostage situation, or somebody who really needs to be talked off a ledge, starts with one of my people, and I wanted to make sure that they have the training available to them to be able to diffuse that situation, to build the rapport, and to, to keep that connection with that person until help arrives. We developed a new subscriber fee schedule, which is, goes into effect in July of twenty six, and this fee schedule is based on calls per service, instead of some concoction of radios percentages, don't ask me to explain how the current figure came up, I can give you better figures next year. For example, for the year. Uh, for example, uh, for the year of twenty twenty-four, Tombstone Marshal's Office did three thousand, three hundred and forty-eight calls per service, and Tombstone, uh, Tombstone Fire Department did three hundred and ten calls per service. With this new schedule, we take that number, we take off a hundred to get that to you for free. And, and there's a reason for that. Uh, the reason why we do that is because the smaller fire departments get a free service because they never make it to a hundred. So, we wanted to make it fair. And then in times that number by sixteen dollars, that will be your new estimated, uh, fee per service in the upcoming year. What it will do when this goes into effect is we'll let the first three months of the fiscal year in twenty-six start, and then we'll look at your calls per service, and we'll give you a bill after the first three months. Um, you might be up or down depending, but, um, that's gonna give you a good figure, a good transparency, and you're gonna know what's happening in your community with these numbers. Uh, we actually worked very closely with Cochise County Sheriff's Office and a grant that was received for the school district. And now we get three sixty is now in all of Cochise County school systems. What that is, is a emergency management program. Every class is set up with an ability to activate an alarm that goes straight to dispatch. So, that's, that's huge. We are the only county so far in the state that's done this as a whole. Uh, everybody else is kind of piecing in. We added four new consoles this last November, giving us ten nine one one stations and nine stations with full radio functions. I am funded by, um, the Department of Administration, nine one one office, for eleven nine one one stations. My eleventh station is actually down in Memphis. That's my backup. Um, but we've got the ten set up now so that as we get more people on board and trained and radio traffic, um, actually grows, and we're actually looking at adding another log channel. Because right now we only have two, um, we need the extra bodies on the floor. So, minimum staffing is gonna become a priority here in the near future. Uh, we promoted one manager and three supervisors, adding some span of control. Uh, we're adding emergency alerting to dispatch drives. So, we're working together with emergency management. When you receive those alerts for the ready to go or shelter in place or whatever, uh, right now, nine times out of ten, I correctly sent it to you. Uh, and if it wasn't me, it's somebody with emergency management. We wanna give our dispatchers complete total power to do so because we're on the radio when we hear incident command say, I need a reverse nine one one sent right now for this area. And instead of having to call emergency management, giving them all the information, having emergency management calling incident commander and then sending out the alert, we documented that, and we're sending out the alert. See the response time? Um, Wilcox joined us on a full-time basis, July of twenty twenty-three. They were part-time prior to that. Bisbee joined us on a full-time basis in twenty twenty-three, July also. They were also part-time before that. Next gen nine one one upgraded in our, in our center, July of twenty twenty-three, which is here. Uh, what that means to the community is, is a lot of updated and, and better technology. We now have smart transcription, which AI actually transcribes what we say and what the caller says. We have the capabilities, uh, we have citizen input, if I remember the names, sorry. And what that is, is if there's an active event happening, if there's something really bad happening in the road or a big fire or something like that, dispatch has the capability to send, maybe to someone who has a cell phone or one time that, that he can basically click on. And he can live feed what's happening in the location back to dispatch, and we can live feed it back to the first responders. It's a safety tool. It's an amazing tool, and we've been playing with it a little bit more. Um, and then you've got three words technology, which we're playing with, and we're getting our best, uh, system upgraded, which is our mapping. Um, we work very hard with the G I S services to make sure that's in a ninety-five percent file at all times. And, um, we have text to nine one one. That gets used a lot. Um, we've developed a dispatch diversion program and a policy that has some partnership also with Cochise County Sheriff's Office and the care team. So, if we have a suicidal caller call in, but he's not a imminent danger to himself, we can defer that call to the care team instead of sending the squads, basically lights and sirens and bells and whistles. It's another good step, trying not to elevate that situation anymore. Now, we keep seeing safety in mind at all times. So, if this guy says he's got a gun or knife or whatever's happening, then it doesn't go to diversion. It goes to law enforcement. But if it's, I'm thinking about it, or I'm thinking about it, I have no means to do it, I'm home alone, it goes to care. Um, and basically, just working on continuing, building the relationships of transparency. I actually provide a weekly transparency report to my joint powers authority board on a Friday afternoon with full-time partnership here with CCOM. Whoever you appoint to that board to attend our J P A meetings on a bi-monthly basis will be a recipient of that report as well. And of course, it's welcome to be shared with anybody who wants to know what's going on in CCOM. In addition to I provide tours. So, if you haven't had a tour yet, please, please reach out and, um, let me know. Get excited. We'll make that happen. And, um, I do like a quarterly newsletter to share readily with council members of all partnerships, but with the community as well. And I'm ready for your questions.
I think I just like to start by saying, uh, I've, I've been designing the E-Rate dispatch system for over forty-five years. Your entire report, I'm, I would address the audience. I have to say that this is very impressive. Uh, you would believe the number of communities that have been dragging and screaming for things like Next Gen, text nine one one, uh, when Tammy Jo was talking about the pre-arrival instructions. That, that can make a huge difference in a lot of ways. Uh, it helps reduce hygiene events. It's just vital. And so, I'm very, very, very thankful. The other thing I'd like to say with a record too is, um, as far as costs too, you know, there's a lot that we said about pooling resources. Um, you know, maintenance fees for, say, a period of dispatch in the hours these days, you wouldn't do it any other way. So, usually if you were the size of Tombstone, you would still be getting some system. And maintenance fees on that loan, for say, Tombstone could run half of this whole rate just for that, not completely other things. I'm just saying, I'm very impressed. Uh, and I couldn't be prepared for so much more. I just wanted everybody to know, so I've been doing this for years. Uh, it sounds like we're in very good hands.
Thank you. If I may, um, address the question that Councilmembers have earlier. Um, upon approval of this full-time partnership, I would work very closely with the city and with, um, Commander Watkins and Chief Alman on a public information sharing campaign. We have not only a non-emergency line that everybody across the county knows, it's the five two zero eight zero three, three five five zero, but we encourage people to dial nine one one too. Somebody is always there to answer the phone twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And ninety percent of the time, it actually plots on a map where you're calling from so that we have a good address in the event that somebody can't give us an address.
Wonderful. Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that I did take the tour because I'm like constantly interested. I don't have any knowledge in this, and I saw the video where the county supervisor toured. So, I asked him about that, and he said, it's gonna be on the guide. Come on and see it. I was thrilled, and I agree with Councilwoman Goodspeed. It, it's top notch. The protocols, everything that you have in place is phenomenal. But kudos also because I got to experience it. I had to make a nine one one call on Friday night when I didn't know if the gentleman had been taking care of the fire station. So, I know this email, and I was like, I need to get a hold of her. He wasn't answering. And I called to service, and they went through all of those protocols. The one item is club. They also ask, does he have a gun, life and club?
Yes.
So, that was kind of funny. I'm glad for a lot of club. But anyway, the other point of that is, they did contact our marshal's office and the deputy all the way with me as well. So, I'm just extremely thrilled with that. I love all of the safety issues in place, and I'm kind of proud to say that's a wonderful partnership.
Thank you.
I also want to mention, uh, Tammy Jo, thank you for keeping our rates down.
Oh, yes.
Tammy Jo has really worked on keeping the same rate from part-time to full-time, uh, just for this year. Uh, so I do want to thank her for working with City Tombstone, our budget, and, um, helping the citizens. I appreciate it.
Thank you. If you, if you stay on track with the members who've been running for the last two years, the seal probably dropped even more. So, that'd be good.
So, we're probably gonna say, what, ten thousand a year along with this?
I'd say minimal five.
Okay, well, I'm just trying.
I'm just trying for you since the number.
Well, just, I'm just deep. Commander, you got something to say back there? You're blocking the shade of the door, and I think we have something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, sorry, Tammy Jo, uh, could I undo this whole thing because I don't like, sorry. Um, so, a couple of things. Uh, I think it's important to note that sixteen dollars is nothing compared to, one, the quality of service that she's gonna provide, or two, the market, right? Uh, you'll find if you research this, those call centers are between twenty-five and thirty-five bucks, uh, per call. So, for her to give us a very good rate of sixteen dollars, uh, a call is, is critical. Something else is that, um, everyone here, we all know that Tombstone is like, uh, we're less hesitant to change in Tombstone. So, everyone in the room knows somebody that has the non-emergency fires or Tombstone Marshal's Office and have the program under their phone, right? And so, let me ask you this. What happens when more of those citizens are involved in a catastrophic event, home invasion, something like that, and they call Tombstone Marshal's Office, Tombstone Fire Department, and they call and nobody's there. Vanessa's not there at two AM or whatnot. And, uh, Tammy Jo has actually evidenced a lot of things that she's refined, and I, I don't care like, uh, I don't care about sharing that in a public setting, but Tammy Jo has been a great partner to the Tombstone Marshal's Office in the last three months before she was obligated to do so. She really put in some lifesaving measures, uh, before it was a big, this contract board. So, once we become in contract with her, she's even gonna take care of us. Uh, another thing is, is that aside from the problem of non-emergency calls not being answered by a phone or no one's handling it, um, Tombstone Marshal's Office often has to rely upon the people. So, let's just say for the sake of argument, Vanessa quits and, uh, Dee is sick. Who's gonna answer the phone for those non-emergent calls? Who's gonna answer all that? And, uh, Tammy Jo is very humble in the fact that the process that she's had to fight in, in the last four years to build what she's built. But there was a time where, uh, at no fault of hers, Tombstone was almost non-sustainable. I mean, Tombstone, CCOM was almost non-sustainable. It was almost non-operational. And when that happened, all first responders within the community came together and made it almost too big to fail. So, what does that mean for you as a Tombstone, uh, councilperson? Your people will be provided public safety answers, uh, call service no matter what, right? Regardless of, if you pay your bills, you're, you're gonna get services for your community twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And the only ask I would have from you on that is help us embark on a massive public safety campaign where all citizens in Tombstone race, the fire department phone number, and the marshal's office phone number, and they call directly to CCOM, and CCOM does what they do. But we can talk about all that later, but please don't let Tammy Jo's efforts or her awesomeness not be recognized. Uh, this is a great opportunity for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Tammy? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, man. Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm calling for a question. Call vote.
Mayor Procham Regan?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritz?
Yes.
Mayor Esco?
Yes, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is discussion or action through a resolution. Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control of Protection for beer and wine store at Tombstone and tail here, I D West Grandoff Way, as for motion to approve. Approved?
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there discussion on it?
I just have one question. It says store. That means there, it's carry on and serving there or they serve in a console?
I think it's both.
Anything is both. Uh, generally, uh, what they have told me, uh, they've changed from Tombstone grand to the A M R. Rainbow, I believe, and most of their hotels have a little area that the kids, the guests can buy their wine.
Thank you.
Any further discussions? Any further discussion or for a long piece?
Mayor Procham Regan?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Ritz?
Yes.
Mayor Esco?
Yes, motion carried. I made a discussion or action through a special agreement from B D S Division of Department of Independence for area being requested and the use of, uh, the Chevron Hall. I guess it's Chevron Hall, right? Okay, Friday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, ten AM to three PM, Chevron Hall. As for motion to approve.
Approved? Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Have no discussion, no discussion on the favor? Uh, is anybody against it? Okay. By the time this special action through a special agreement in Arizona, four eight, four, uh, question areas Congress requesting the use of the following. Sunday, December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, another area, one PM. Tuesday, December thirty, twenty twenty-five, four PM, the six PM, Chevron Hall for welcome ceremony. On Sunday, in a more closing ceremony, on Tuesday. As for motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. American discussion. Uh, no, the press, no discussion on the favor.
Aye.
Motion carried. As for motion to approve.
I'm mostly good.
Second.
Motion made in all favor. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.